Yeah.
We're live. He's in charge.
You know what I'm saying?
I'm sending the question.
Oh, happy bride. One more time, call by. Please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, free and equal.
Welcome.
Councilman Byrd.
Here.
Councilmember Conklin.
Here.
Councilmember Missouri, here. Councilmember Stevenson.
Here.
Councilmember Brinkin.
Here.
Councilmember Morris.
Here.
Mayor Law.
Here. Approval of the minutes from the October seventeen regular meeting. On motion for floor and second, any further discussion, questions or comments? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Byrd.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri, yes. Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Councilmember Brinkin.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Law.
Yes. Unless anyone has any objections, I'm going to move item six A. To the top of the agenda here, because I'm assuming that the reason that most people are here too. So save you having to sit through everything else if you didn't want to. Well, we'll move to six A. Consideration of the request from the county housing authority to direct planning commission to consider the impact of the reduction. The required parking spaces in the zoning ordinance. Who is speaking on that part, Greg?
I think Jeff Rich is. Yes, good evening. I've not been to a city council meeting, so is it kind of just pre? Preformed?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, yeah, I'm from the housing coalition. I remember they're gonna have a coalition today. And, uh, we are asking, uh, city council to consider asking the zoning board. To reduce the required number of parking spaces for rental units, new construction rental unit. Down from three for each unit to two for each unit. Two reasons, and first of all, I think that the most obvious reason is that we're looking at doing some development. At the Dicky school property and, uh, and we've already found from the zoning board. Uh, there is, um, severe consideration for the number of parking spaces that were included in the original development. That being, uh, nineteen spaces. For the nineteen units. And so, uh, we've gone back to the drawing board. We've looked at the consideration, the plans considered being considered. And we're thinking that it might be smarter, wiser to look at a smaller development plan, which would include eleven units. Um, basically developing up for the building. And at the same time, we can also increase the number of parking spaces available. Uh, to about twenty-five or twenty-six, depending on, uh, how things, uh, measure out with some survey. And, um, that would give more than two, or two parking spaces for each unit, which we feel is pretty adequate. Considering that the folks that will be, uh, renting these units, uh, are not the typical type of two-car owner households. They are geared towards lower income households. And, um, they would not necessarily have two or three cars per household. The second reason that we're asking is because in the long range, we're hoping to be able to develop more of this type of affordable housing in the community. It's a desperate need right now. I have, um, about two hundred and forty applications for rental assistance. Coalition is still trying to process. Um, which is a huge need in this community. These folks can't afford the rents that are being paid, uh, or being asked by some of the landlords out there, and so. We would really like to see more development of affordable housing in the community. But we think that the, the restriction for adding three units, excuse me, good parking space per unit makes that type of development. Almost nearly impossible based on some of the, you know, the land restraints that we have in the city limits. That's.
Questions?
So Jeff, those parking spaces that you're talking about would be in, uh, a, what I call playground area of the property, kind of behind to the left of the property.
Exactly. We're gonna be doing some significant improvements to the land to include a retaining wall that would raise up. That corner of the property and give us, uh, fairly sufficient sized parking area along with parking that currently existed. At the front of the building, well, on the, uh, Fairview Street side, I had to think Fairview Street side, there's a couple of, uh, spots right off Fairview Street there. And then the alleyway, alleyway going down, uh, there would be some additional parking there, which was currently used by Dicky's school. Already.
Thank you.
Jeff, of the eleven units, um, you tell us what bedroom, uh, number on what.
Yeah, there's gonna be, um, eight one-bedroomed units. Two efficiencies. One two-bedroomed unit and then another two-bedroomed unit that will be a. Seven, sorry, seven, seven, one bedroom.
Anyone else? Questions? Rich? Okay, well, I'll open the floor. Comments, anyone else in attendance, please keep in mind. Give it brief, and if it's anything over and over again, we'll move on. Anyone? Your name?
Wayne, studying, yes, P E, P D I N G, I live in one nine nine South Fairview Street.
I'm sorry, I'm catching someone else's attention, but they have to be in front of you, I apologize.
Would you go ahead?
So, one nine nine South Fairview Street, close to the Dicky's school, uh, with N G R P, so I received a letter. From the coalition when they are doing zoning hearing work, so I'm obviously directly impacted by it. So this project did go to the zoning hearing board, they asked for numerous. And, uh, all the various requests were denied, five-surate. And one of them was unparking. And they wanted to reduce the number of parking spaces, uh, for nineteen years at the time, they said. Uh, from, you know, the three per, which is required by zoning, to the nineteen, which was just rare. So they did, they were denied, so basically they lost, they didn't, didn't comply with the city's rules or influence. So now they're coming back to you guys to change rules. And then they're gonna go back to zoning hearing board again for another project, whether it's nine, eleven, nineteen, seven, whatever it is. That district is zoned for two, one single family or two families. So it doesn't fit the name correctly. Um, the other thing about parking is just because you reduce the number of required parking spaces, doesn't mean cars go away. It just drops the month, number of cars, number of spaces there are required to provide parking. And at the zoning hearing board, the development was stated as. For fair market housing, it was not geared towards any particular income group, it was just fair market housing, which means anybody. So we don't know how many cars are gonna have. Um, the city actually asked that they put something in the, the leases about lending the number of parking spaces. Of course, that didn't go very far because they lost five nothing on the. So, uh, as far as, you know, this is just the first attempt to get this same project approved again. They say it's eleven, but whether this gets voted, reduce the number of parking spaces, three to two does not obligate them to only do eleven. They can come back again and have, you know, probably eighteen. So, you know, eleven, nineteen, really doesn't matter. What they're asking for is reduction in the number of parking spaces. And as I said, reducing the number of parking spaces they're required to provide does not make the cars go away. It just lessens their requirement. Um, so the plan is go back to the zoning hearing board if they are successful in this regard. And we told a lot of people about this. We told them they need to come because my understanding, based on your discussions with my wife, this is just. A vote by the city to hand this off to a planning commission. I mean, it was referenced earlier, it was gonna go to zoning hearing board, but Cindy, correct me if I'm wrong, it goes to the planning commission next, not zoning hearing board.
It goes to the planning, city and county for review comments, then it comes back to the council in the form of a public hearing for the vote.
So, um, like I said, they lost, right? They're just trying to get to the same point, getting little victories each time. Changing this zoning, uh, the parking department here, changes, should be changed to the whole city, I assume. It's not changing it for theirs, otherwise that's spot going, which is not permissible. So, uh, they're doing an analysis of the impact across the board, the whole city, on what this change would do. Um, that'd be a good question with planning missions, yeah. Um, so just wanted to go on the record, there's a lot of people here, a lot more than you normally have at these meetings. And they're all, they're here against it. We got the zoning hearing board, there are more people, we gotta take chairs, gotta get chairs out of the other room. And when it comes to the next vote, we need more people. The neighborhood has spoken on this, the neighborhood's against it. There's, everyone, you know, it's just a matter of whether they can make these meetings or not, some people actually took days off. They're coming here to this meeting. They're opposed to it because it's gonna impact the neighborhood. Zoning for this area, R L low-density residential district in the city's ordinance. The purpose of this district is primarily intended to accommodate a wider variety of housing types, a more intensive land use than R one, which is low. The district preserves. The low-density housing household character of the existing neighborhoods by committing compatible. Low-density residential dwellings such as single-family attached. Semi-detached dwellings and two-family. Parks, schools, places of worship, and other supportive services that are an appropriate neighborhood scale. This is not of that. That's all I wanna say for now.
Thank you.
Unless there's some other comments in favor of it, I'll.
You and Rich.
Uh, my name's Robert Meyer and I represent, uh, along with money from my partner, the Dicky School LLC. We purchased the school, you know, like over a year ago. Uh, and I'd like to point out to you, historically, this was, you know, obviously used as a school. And during those five days of the week, there were far more cars parked there than what was originally requested, the three per day. So, uh, you know, and we've, and you've heard testimony about the housing prices that we have, the affordability of the housing. Mike and I are actually donating this to the coalition that's able to, that are able to make headway. So, uh, there's large government grants available to the housing coalition that can make this happen. But I think repurposing significant beloved buildings in this city is probably something that you'd all need to take a strong look at. Certainly Senator Kennedy has when it comes to churches and schools that have been retired from their useful use. In addition to that, we did a small survey. And I think it's a little bit disingenuous to think that we should be held to a higher standard to have three parking spaces or even two parking spaces. When you do a survey of the neighborhood and ask each one of the people here if they can off-street three cars at their own parks. Many of them can't even park on their own property, they have to park on the street. Because there is parking situation, but historically, there's always been a parking situation. Um, so I, I just would like you to consider that repurposing this building for something that's useful to the community, this community needs it. There's money available to do it, it's not coming out of your particular pocket. You don't have to go out and get a bond to do it, so, uh, and, and the need is definitely there. So we appreciate your consideration. Mike, you did the survey on the street, you know what happened, maybe you'd like to add to it?
Two weeks ago, on both Sunday night around. No, four layers. Um, pretty much the time before we home in the bed. The street sweeping on Fairview and, um, Jones Street happens on Monday morning and Tuesday morning, the wee hours of the morning, so basically Sunday night, Monday night. I run ten or eleven o'clock at night, drove from Delphon Avenue down Fairview, turned on a wallet. Back into Jones Street and told nice, when everybody had to be on one side of the street, there were a dozen parking spots each night. I've had video.
What is the point that you're saying? I'm sorry, what's the point of saying there are a dozen parking spaces?
That on the worst-case scenario, there's plenty of parking around those streets. Cause that's.
Yeah. Where there is no parking. Or where the people's homes down there, say, or parking lots. You haven't been in a situation where it just has parents who need your help, who need to take you back to your house. To park your car, save your flight, and then pick you up, meet your father who's paralyzed. At the house alone. Just save your space for parking.
Good.
All right, I think we're getting off track. This is, my name is Robert Everett, I am thirty-seven south.
Thank you.
First and foremost, it doesn't matter what you say about park, those are pre-existing, they are non-conforming, pre-existing uses. All right, those homes resided there prior to last zoning change, two thousand and eight, all right? So under state law, they are considered grandparents, they are pre-existing non-conforming. And that's stick to the law. The law is very, you know, specific about this. If you look at Act two forty-seven, nineteen sixty-eight, which is the municipality planning code, okay? Section nine ten point two gives you five criteria you must meet for a zoning fair. We went through this at the zoning hearing board. They did not meet these criteria. They bought something knowing it, it was what it was, and are trying to convert it into something else that does not conform a zone. They have brought hardship upon themselves, and that is strike one, you throw it in. Strike two is the zoning hearing board recognized this will create a substantial change to the character, okay, of the neighborhood, major strike two. All right, under section nine ten point two of the municipal, municipal planning code, which is the state law, all right? They fail on two major components, plain and simple. I don't know why we're rehashing. And I implore you, city council, to put an end to this, quit beating the dead horse. The law is very clear. They don't meet the criteria, so why are we gonna continue to waste taxpayers' time and money? Rehashes. That's what I would like to know. Like I said, the law says, and it's very specific. Doesn't matter if they're non-pro, doesn't matter if they're poor, black, white, Hispanic, five, two, eight, ten. Those right criteria they must comply with in order to be able to get that zoning variance. And stepping outside of that and allowing for this proposal would be selective enforcement. And it would violate state law, it would violate your own ordinance. Plain and simple, folks.
Anyone else?
On only two twenty-seven thirty-three, where we ran the problem too, is Highland Street. About too long ago, it's designated to park on both sides, really difficult getting through there. That's not the point. Point is, when the sweeper night comes, we have people from Highland Street, from Donald Park down there. And I had, we had one truck that would sit in front of our place until the next sweeper night, and they would move it. So they're bringing it down, sending it, that, that has to be taken into account. Because if you look on Highland Street, I'm sure most of you have, it's just part four, you can barely get through there, one part at a time. So it, it really makes it difficult, and as I said, they come down and park on our street, that's something that hasn't been.
Anyone else?
My name's John Carl, I live on one nine team South Fairview. My issue on top of parking, you've got a rental size of five units, sometimes there's ten cars to those five units. No place out front, just two spots on the street and nothing else. Same thing out, without Barry on the left before you get to Dicky's school, there's ten people in that house. Their cars are all parked in front of Dicky's school, their friends come, sweeper night, it's just crazy, there's no place. This thing, can we do something about this grandpa, it's still ten parking spaces. And, or ten cars in a building and two parking places on the street out front, nothing else, that's ridiculous. Now you wanna add more parking?
Anyone else?
Yeah. When it's dying again, um, yes, it was a school. But as you all know, schools operate in a different cycle than presidential, and so. Uh, there's actually a table in the city ordinance that you can all refer to, that shows when the schools are busy, which is not the same time as presidential areas. So when I'm at work, or my wife's at work, and there's people that are using the school, so what? Or, you know, Jackie or Watts or whatever, if they're not there because they're at work, you know, with a car, it's not a big deal. We're talking about the same time that we're here, the residents will be there. So that's one point. Second point is, not costing us anything, it's gonna come from government funding, fucking everybody here. So, um, it's not for government money, and I don't know what their projection is for the units. Um, but at the other meeting, they said they're looking for three point five million in government funding. For nineteen units, where it worked out to exclude and after the capital land, land's gonna donate them for about. So if you take three point five, five by nineteen units, it's a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars per apartment. Which, if you look in the neighborhood, how many houses there are worth a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, plus the value of one. Also, my understanding is to come off the tax laws. So it's currently vacant taxes, but if it goes in part of the coalition, it will be off the tax gold, a loss of income there. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's true. Joe, you know, you, you've got a vacant lot right across here that the city now, you know, if there's such a need to, to do this now, then why aren't you exploring, or why isn't the coalition exploring? Building something over there for affordable housing, for plus housing, all right? You know, it's zoned appropriately, you got a parking lot, Derek, city-owned parking lot. As I, as I go back to, this hardship is being brought on by the feelings. You know, and that is a major strike in terms of getting variance.
Anything else? Anything for council?
Uh, just a clarification, Mr. Rich, so again, the parking that you're talking about, the twenty-two-plus spaces that you're going to create are not on the street.
Correct. They're on the property. And twenty-five and twenty-six things.
Can I ask one more thing, Mr. Rich? You talked about the alleyway and there, there are two existing parks, which I know where they are, they're by that house. So, uh, in the plans that were presented at the last meeting, they're going to take off the, uh, stage. Of Dicky's school and extend out a, uh, a patio type thing that people could laugh and sit on that, or they'll be, they'll be right, right next to the cars, those two, it's those two parking spaces. I don't see them being able to use those two for what the plans are with the building.
Not sure I understand what your question is.
I'm saying that they are going to extend to the side of the building, you remember the.
We're not extending beyond their physical. Orders of the building.
Well, how do I get a patio to extend that?
We're taking away some students.
But it's still, no, I, I don't see it working, they still will be facing the threat that I'm on.
Yes, they will.
That's not. Are they hundreds of thousands of dollars you're, you're paying to have that building done?
How many hundreds of thousands of people are living on the streets right now that need affordable housing?
What did Mr. Everett just say here? There are other areas that you'd be putting, getting that money from the building itself. I mean, that building is so poor.
Well, let's, all right, let's, we'll try to stay on, on what the topic is, I appreciate where you're coming from, but the topic is about the parking itself, and. I, I get it.
Citywide, not just this property, they're asking us to ask the planning commission to review a change to the zoning throughout the city, not just there.
Well, we do understand there's a, a problem there, so how many other places within the city of Lock Haven where we pay taxes? It's going to be affecting a lot of people.
It, it would affect the entire city if we, if we, if, and Cindy, you can correct me if I'm wrong, because I am many times. But if we were to. Ask the planning commission for recommendation, if we go to them, they would make a recommendation, and we'd still have to take action to change anything, correct?
The way, the way this would move through the system is, what you are voting on tonight is not to be site-specific. You've been asked to amend the zoning ordinance. That in and of itself means that you have to take into consideration the effect that it will have on the entire city.
Correct.
If it's amended.
Right.
That being said, if, if you choose to move it forward through the review process, it goes to the city planning commission. Who, they typically review subdivisions and land developments, and they deal with parking as far as developments go. And they have, uh, an area of expertise, so, so to speak, that they, it will go to the county planning mission, they will review it, they will offer review comments. It will be sent to the city solicitor, who will review it and offer comment. All of those comments collectively will come back to city council. In the form of a public hearing that has to be advertised in a new way than any other public hearing. Which allows people the opportunity to come and make comments, that's, that's. Till the process is all done, if you choose to move it forward, you're probably looking at that, a public hearing after the first of the year. To complement the schedule of the city planning and the county planning mission to only meet on a certain date.
So we're clear on the process, the driver?
Yes, so, and the burden of this and the cost, are they, are they, are the burden of the taxpayer, are they a burden of the people looking for specifically this rezone? Or variant, I mean, I, I just wanna, I wanna ask that, because again, you're saying, you try to please one person, when you don't see an issue across the city as a whole, I mean, you hear this from other people, so if I'd like to ask council to think about it. And look, the cost's gonna be associated with this, and look, the cane of worms you're gonna open up. Because it's gonna extend more than parking boats.
Understood. Um, cost, Cindy, can you address anything to do with that? I mean, when we, when we meet, we don't get paid any more money for being here. You know, in the period of time, and zoning hearing boards are volunteers, so they don't get paid anything. Um, but I suppose going to solicitor, solicitor would get paid something.
There's advertisements for the public hearing itself, um, there is a provision in the, uh, fee resolution. For a fee for a proposed zoning amendment, so if it does move forward, those that are asking for the amendment would be required to pay that.
So it wouldn't be a cost to the taxpayer.
That fee typically, that was calculated, uh, in order to cover the cost of advertising and copies and things like that. As far as the solicitor, it depends on the amount of time that he has in the review. Whether or not that cost would be that.
I mean, I understand that you're, you're talking about other costs, costs to the city.
Yeah, I mean, outside of, the taxpayers are gonna incur a cost, and if this is benefiting to one party, one party alone, and you don't have other parties in the city saying, hey, we got this issue, that issue. Like I said, when you go and you open that up, you're gonna open up cane of worms. That other people are gonna have in that public comment, well, while you're looking at this, we need to evaluate that. I mean, it's, you know, you're walking a slippery slope there, I just, you know.
Does anyone have anything else?
I guess I do. After sitting through the two-and-a-half-hour, arduous zoning hearing board meeting, and didn't say a word, I listened to everybody. Uh, it's a sensitive issue, and, and I don't, not sure. That the housing coalition is going down the right path, are you sure this is the path you would like us to take? Or do you think it would have been more advantageous for you to go back to the zoning hearing board with your amendment? Because it sounded and looked to me like they might accept two parking spaces instead of three. And, and you reduced the amount of apartments, that was just my observation. This looks like it's a longer process, we, uh, council may listen or may not listen to the planning commissions. Uh, also, you're only asking to, uh, to see as, what the impact is if reduced to two. What if it's increased to four? Uh, I think we should ask for the whole thing, I can remember back, and I think Barb was on the planning commission then, that. They, they started off with four, and some people wanted two that had duplex houses, because you could put four unrelated people on each side. And, and I can remember them saying, two's not enough, four's maybe too many, let's settle on three. So that's why, and Mr. Farley, they should look into your situation. So that's why in Mr. Farley, they should look into your situation. That, and I don't sure if when we do rental inspections, that it, that we tell them or remind them that they need. At least three parking places for those type of complexes. No matter where they are, we don't remind them or should be, maybe.
That. The the free parking spaces was implemented when the zoning ordinance was amended in two thousand and eight. Anything that predated. That day was granted.
Okay.
That that holds true. That's not something that's uh. Exclusive to our municipality, that's. Nationwide, it's granted.
I just remember hearing uh, former planner Leonora Hanigan making that argument for at least three and sticking to it. I also think that this might be a special circumstance. That uh, maybe the plan, their zoning board might consider. The reduction of the apartments and and increase in parking spaces. Might be the easier route to go because if we say, no, we don't want them to look at it. That part of it's dead right here tonight. If we do tell them to look at it, I'm thinking it's gonna take well into next year. Until they all discuss it, pass it around, we pass it back and forth, it goes every which way. And it comes back to us, we still might say no, or we might say yes. So maybe you need to strategize a little bit, would be my suggestion, and go at it a different way and. See what the zoning, what they're gonna say to you also. That's just my opinions and observations.
Anything else?
Yeah, yeah, I I'm just in recollection back to two thousand and eight and and I I will remind folks that uh. That in two thousand and eight, uh, with the city population right around the ten thousand mark. There were uh, there were over four thousand students at Lock Haven University. That was really the trigger for that discussion. Four thousand students at Lock Haven University. There are now, what, twenty-four hundred, twenty-six hundred, whatever? So there's a significant reduction in population. Uh, and and. You were talking about the economic impact, but the economic impact of having potentially twenty more uh, residents, some of them. Potentially still employed and uh, shoppers downtown. Uh, I think any of our stores would tell you twenty more customers at any given time. Would be a pleasure for them to have.
Well, let me, Sean, let me ask a question, right? You said that that was based. On the total population of the university. Does that change what the population of that per house is? And how many cars are adding to that big place?
It it changes the the makeup of of uh. Buildings in the hill section and the number of people staying there. Or or the, you have to make that presumption that that population is. That additional population of two thousand more people or eighteen hundred more people was spread within the that section of the city, not just. That hill section, but a percentage of it would have been. So from a, from a, just from a racial standpoint, you have to make that assumption.
The comments you cast. Mr. Mark, I was making sure where you.
I appreciate Mr. Stevenson's comments and certainly Mr. Conklin's comments. Historically, it's interesting to look at. As elected leaders in this community, I'd much as to each ask yourselves, what are you actually doing? The city council to alleviate the critical housing situation in this city? And consider that when you vote.
Alright, we give everybody ample time to to give input.
Just just a quick thought here. Um, if you went down to nine. Um, residents or nine buildings, you you're down to twenty-seven. And you're at twenty-six. And if you do that, then that helps alleviate. Us deciding. Another society. I mean, you went from nineteen, I know nineteen eleven's big. But then. Two more?
So uh.
Just a thought.
Yeah. I'll I'll address that and I'll kind of respond to uh, for Stevenson's suggestion. We really, really went back to the drawing board, back to the zoning hearing to try to figure out what the best strategy would be. I'm never ever gonna deny that we need to develop more affordable housing and I see this as a. A unique opportunity in that. We have a a facility that will lend itself easily to that type of development. We have a lot of government money that's available right now to do this type of development. And what's holding us back. From what I understood at the zoning hearing was parking. There was an issue with parking. So we felt that the best strategy would be to take that parking issue out of the table. And then go back and and address the other zoning issues that we're. We're looking for amendments on. So. What I'm hearing tonight is that it's. The argument is parking, but that's not the real reason they don't want to develop. They just do not want to develop in their area. So I'm just gonna put it out there because it's very plain and very obvious. And whether we do four four places per unit or one place per unit. There is gonna be a huge pushback from the community for this development. So I can't take that away. That's their right, that's their opinion. Uh, but I feel very, very strongly against the Nippiism of not allowing affordable housing development in my neighborhood. So you are correct, I could definitely meet the current zoning requirement. I still have to get a variance based on the type of development. So I'm still gonna have to go through zoning. Again. And we'll just have to see what the argument is that.
You have two minutes, no, not yet. One more time.
Yes, wait, again, um. Although parking was the biggest objection was not the old address. Whether it's nineteen eleven or whatever number units goes in there, they're not even bidding to have anything physically tonight, so that's the, yeah, whatever it is. It's not just that, there's gonna be additional traffic congestion, noise, get more people, changes the nature than everybody. It's just the way it is. And. To to say the only thing we thought about was parking and then next time we come for the different argument, now we brought up other things the last time, so I don't, I wanna clear that up. Um. So the other thing is uh. If there's that many less residents. And when do they build a uh, development on, the university built that uh, housing on North Liberty?
I'm not sure of the exact.
Too bad to the other day. So the university built some more housing in the realm, so there's less students, there's more student housing, there's gonna be more apartments. Available for the people of Lock Haven. Why do we need eleven, nine, nineteen, whatever it is? Plus, as Rob pointed out, there are vacant lots. That are available that could be developed. See, the thing is, the building. Unfortunately, they view it as an asset. It's not. They try to give it away to the city, I believe, or. And the city didn't want it. So the building really is not an asset, it's a liability. So they're trying to convert a liability into something. I admire the effort, but the reality is, it's not worth it. So if they tore that building down, they could put in, in subdivision, they put in a lot of units and they need zoning. We wouldn't object to that because they're meeting zoning. Our objection is, it does not fit the neighborhood. Whereas nine, eleven, nineteen, or wherever they come up with, doesn't fit the neighborhood. It's low density, single family, two families. They need zoning. We have, we're not here. You don't have to go to the zoning hearing board, you don't have to go to the planning commission, if they wanna change the rules because they have a property. That they can't use. And it doesn't fit, and that's our objection. Parking is just one element of that.
Thank you. Last time.
Alright. I mean, I go back, state law, folks. Then municipal planning code, this has been through the zoning hearing board, they already ruled that would have a negative effect on the character of the neighborhood. They already went through the criteria, like I said, and it doesn't, it doesn't pass all five criteria, it has to get a zoning clearance. So it doesn't matter how feel-good it is, okay? The fact is, there's other properties around here that could be potentially acquired, developed right now, that money that's available. That's just reality, like I said, does not meet state law.
Okay. Um, so we have an issue on the table, do I have a motion?
You please clarify the issue again.
The issue is. Do I have a motion? To direct the planning commission to consider the impact of the reduction of the required parking spaces. In the zoning ordinance chapter four ten through one oh seven. The two per unit and return this recommendation to city council.
So move.
Same, I. Very good. So.
Did you have something?
I would just comment, I, listen, I understand the. Trepidation of the community members, but I think Mr. Rich has really answered that. The. The parking spaces for eleven, they have more than needed and they are not on the street. They're in a parking lot at the building. For me, that answers the question. And for us to take the first step to send it back to the planning commission, I think that's what we should do.
Because we're all about work.
I'm not sure that's the route that we should go uh, to change the whole city instead of the spot zoning part. That was mentioned. I know we did it for Kephar Classic, but that's the same zoning area, right? And then isn't that in the same. Residential, medium residential? Caparts, not capart, that, uh. Arden House, not Arden.
That's different.
That's a different zone.
Yeah.
We're a little dusty.
Yeah. Was the train thought. The uh. Is the motion to say exclusively two per unit? Return the recommendation or is it look at? Three or four or whatever it may be?
But what I laid out was what was on the agenda, which asks to uh. So, to consider the reduction, the impact of the reduction. And the required two. Two per unit.
Required three, changing the entire ordinance in the city to review it on the county level and the city level to consider changing the entire ordinance. Taking out the requirement of three for new construction anywhere in the city, not just on North Fair Street or South Fair Street. But anyway, anybody that wants to build new.
In that zone. In that type, no, no, in that type of zone. It can be, right? You're not changing it all over, right? It would change it all over or that.
Family use, the 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 request that was made was to reduce the number of parking spaces required from three. To for any multi. Family facility. So if somebody builds a multi-family facility, right now you're required three parking spaces.
Anywhere.
Anywhere in the city.
Okay.
If somebody converts. A single family to a multi-family, they're required to have three spaces. That's anywhere, any zone that multi-family. Is permitted to develop. And when I say permitted to develop, I mean either by. Right, by special exception or by variance. So anywhere that it would be permitted under any of those three caviars. You need three spaces.
Okay, so we're clear on that now? Everyone? Okay, call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Byer.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri, no. Councilmember Stevenson.
No.
Councilmember Brinker, no. Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
This is a rarity. I'm voting no, because I don't see doing something on a citywide basis. I agree with Steve, I don't know that this is the right way to do this. So, I vote as no. So. Thank you. Um, we'll move on to the agenda. If you'd like to. And out to the. Thank you everyone. Thank you. Really bothersome. I'm just out of control. Yeah. Okay, so that's the way from now. Um. Back to the top here, I think we've heard comments from residents and state taxpayers. Um, do you have anything different for us, Greg? No? Okay. Um, three B, use of the East Main Street parking lot. Problem in elementary holiday concert, actually several here in downtown Lock Haven. And uh, how do we wanna handle this, Casey? You wanna?
Actually, we have Principal Barrett up here.
Principal Barrett. Welcome, thank you for coming.
Yeah, no problem, thanks for having me. Uh, I just come in for the council to ask. Permission to utilize the East Main Street parking lot again for a holiday concert on uh. December ninth, it would be from five o'clock until eight o'clock that evening for concert. And obviously, we have requests to have time prior to that set up and afterwards to. To tear down. Last year was a big success, it brought a lot of people to downtown, um. And got a lot of positive feedback. So with your permission, we would like to host our holiday concert again downtown. On December ninth, and if you so approve that, we ask you to. A lot of positive thoughts for beautiful weather, so, so we can get it in that night. But that's, that's the uh. Reason I'm here is to ask permission to utilize the parking lot that evening for a holiday concert.
Thank you, that's fantastic. Right, and you did it last year, or two. What's the wish of council?
I move the request.
Second.
Motion for in a second, any further discussion or comments? Can't wait for it. Alright, call for the vote.
Councilmember Byerly.
Yeah.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri, yes. Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris. Mayor Long.
Yes. Thank you very much. Alright, thank you guys, I'm very happy. Or C, and actually, C, we wanna address those together.
Uh. C and D, sure.
We wanna split them, but it's up to.
C and D. It is.
If I have some extra people, I wouldn't even count down and pass around for here, please. Go back, Richard, can't.
Separately.
Yes, because each packet is an addition.
And what we're looking at right now first will be foresee the request for the uh, additional holiday lights.
Yeah, so there's an addition to this with this this page. And says commercial of the old fashioned lights. Which is an addition to us.
Yeah, they like, yeah, they're all.
This is a different. This, this is different.
Okay.
Okay, this is a different package. Okay, so here, or and whichever is addressing us, thank you here.
Okay, so there's, at last meeting I had asked to talk about saving some money because of the. The old garland, the lights in the garland are very old. Um, and I know that um, EC is working on getting lights across the street. And I thought, well, we could probably save money if we updated the lights. And that's why there's two options, because I talked with EC, Gray, and I'll be about a second one in here. So the first option would be to do lights, kinda like how Stella A's has it, rather than going across the street, it would go down the street. And stop, it would go from Jay to Grove, not crossing the intersection. And then Grove on the other side would be like the way I go to, to Vesper, Odd Bellas. And vice versa on the opposite side of the street. And then the vault, wall which is recessed, three to the print shop like that way. So it wouldn't be over the street. I, you know, I'm explaining that. So the first option would be just like Stella A's. Um, which reduces the wattage, the current wattage is four point eight watts per bulb. So sixty watts per garland. Um, using this would be one point five watts per bulb, so it drops it a lot. But then the next. Which is the old fashioned lights, it drops it down to three point six total watts. Zero point one four four watts per bulb to go to. to go to this style of lights, which is commercial. So we wanted to see if we could put the lights, put the garlands up like we normally do. Public Works puts up these snowflakes across the streets, if we could have lights going down Main Street. Either one of these options, you know, going along Main Street like Stella A's. And there'd be no cost to the city because we have a business who does not want to be recognized right at the moment. That has donated a substantial amount to cover the cost. The remaining of the cost would be covered by our Pets in the Park fundraiser we have going on. There'd be no expenses and wattage wise, we'll be saving money.
Right, being LED would still be.
Correct.
Right, but not costing as much in that electricity.
Correct.
I think it's important to add too, that if council approves requests, working with AC and her department, when Pendot or when we get to the point of getting the Pendot approvals to do kind of the old time deal a lot even that everyone like where they can cross the street. Downtown then has the lights purchased ready to go for that. So just wanted to add that to her presentation, so that when city council, Casey's department wants to change the book, the lights are there to do that.
And also, I'm sorry I didn't include a picture because I don't want to take it on the next page. You can add connectors to it, so it can go three different directions, which is nice.
Yeah, I see stuff all the time on the basically growing up Lock Haven, so I pictured one of them running across the street and stuff like that, a lot of people seem like that. Thank you for bringing a way for us to do this. Costs less, less electricity.
What's wish of council?
I move the proposal. Request. Second.
Casey, do you have a thought, does this fit in with what you've got planned? This is all you have. Okay, just want to be sure, this is all, everybody's working together, this is something that we've all thought through, and this is, okay. And we'll continue working. Alright, sometimes.
So now you're gonna go, sorry, now you're gonna go parallel, or are you still going down the garland? Or just? The garland will still be there, but not. Okay.
Yeah.
Clear over that then?
Yeah.
Everybody clear? There was a second.
Jeff second.
Oh, the Jeff? No, there was a vote.
Somebody over here, if not, I will.
Yeah.
Alright. I'm sorry, I knew there was a second, I didn't remember.
I think that I seconded. Each other here, I forget where we're.
Alright, so we have a motion for floor and a second, and I think we discussed it well, call for the vote.
Councilmember Byerly.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes. This is so much easier than the first time.
Hey, we didn't have to decide which bulbs.
Well, I'm hoping you pick this one.
We just said do it.
Yeah, so I'm hoping you guys are okay with this one.
Yeah, I, I thought that'll be like that.
Yeah, plus the bulbs are, they last for a hundred hours, you know.
Alright, on to the second.
Stay on the Hallmark, right? Where we see one on the Hallmark, right?
Yes, yeah. So the second request was for the benches. Which I have a couple, there's an addition to the packets. And I'm really into this, and I know that Abby and I were discussing it, and I, I don't want to say that there is an agreement. Um, because we're still talking about it, but I just would like you guys to consider the things that are taking place. And for instance, I went to Legoland this weekend with my family, and every bench in the park was made out of plastic milk cartons and the garbage cans. So that's why I originally had wanted, not, not even from that, but just in general, the maintenance on recycled material is a lot less to maintain. So then, once I saw those little displays all around the park, I'm like, well, how many communities are doing this? So Tucson, Arizona worked with Republic Services to use block machines to create blocks, instead of masonry blocks, to use recycled materials that was turned into blocks. They created four hundred and nine that are being put in parks around Arizona. The city of Boise, Idaho in February of two thousand and twenty-two. They created benches from residents recycled plastic, participating in the Hefty Energy Bag Program. And that information is included in this packet. And the bags were sent to BiFusion headquarters in Los Angeles to create benches. Ocean City, Maryland, which this one's gonna sound really gross, but in July of two thousand and twenty, they created benches by recycled cigarette butts. Because that was their number one expense and cost in cleanup, was that, where they had partnered with businesses, volunteers in the community to collect recycled cigarette butts and the containers that they were in. And partnered with TerraCycle, which is information in the packet, make the benches happen. Quite the honey, gather hagging being created about it. And then number four is Wisconsin Bay, or Green Day, Wisconsin, I'm sorry. August of two thousand and twenty-one, they created benches by participating in the NextTrex recycling program. Was trying to plastic films typically difficult to recycle into comp, into compost fences for community. But I think that this is something, you know, little Lock Haven's getting noticed for a chance. Let's be the first community in Pennsylvania that is recycling materials and turning them into good use. That are not heavily are not, you know, that difficult to maintain. And it's all different ranges of climates that this is being placed in. So I know that there's probably not a vote, because I don't want to not make that happen, that I just want you to see options out there that we could possibly do.
Like Kira said, she'd been discussing this with a city planner, the planner has worked with the engineer and with public input on a particular bench to use throughout the downtown streetscape. If you recall, when we first talked about Art Act funding.
Yes.
One of those items was to expend funds for street furniture, as we call it. But those benches that are the ones that have been picked as part of the design of a downland alley will be installed there, and then those were going to be something that continued throughout the rest of the downtown. So that everything had a theme to it. I know that Abby and Kira have been discussing the bench issue together. Up to this point.
Can we hear from Abby?
Of course.
Yeah, so, uh, Kira and I have been talking about this, um, and I do, I know of a couple programs. I think, I believe in Harrisburg, they did a donation drive, they collected a bunch of plastic bags, and you collect so many tonnage. They don't create the bench out of plastic bags, but the money other recycle donates the bench. I'm not sure what company that is, but I am familiar with a couple, couple things, and more than Kira's brought up. But Kira is correct, uh, we have benches in mind that they match the trash cans that we recently purchased. And also, two of them are going into Down Alley shortly. And they are, for some reason, the four foot bench is more expensive than the six foot bench. But the, the six foot bench is within the range of the, of the one that Kira suggested. So I, I think it's worth that, yes, well, my six foot bench is that I found is the same, about the same cost as the four foot bench that Kira said. So we're saving for the first week, and I'm not sure if I, a longer bench would be less.
We get to see what the design looks like.
Yeah.
It's gonna be something we're gonna carry throughout downtown.
Yeah. Um, they are backless benches. We didn't want to sign on anything, I don't want to. This is the fourth, that's, that's what, that's the same thing. But they're the same, just.
These are just.
They wouldn't, but Kira worked with business owners, and they would be placed ideally against the buildings, so there wouldn't be a that. Um, I would have to clarify with the engineers, those locations, also in other works, to make sure that they have an approval for snow clearance. Which, there's a lot, there's a lot going into this, but I do think, like Greg mentioned, I brought up street furniture for Harpa. It's a competitive list, so I don't understand, but I do think it's still a top priority.
And, and I have to say that, like, I I had found, when we got a bench, and I had found three people that had already wanted to purchase the bench for four hundred and fifty dollars. And Abby had told me about this, the benches afterwards, and then, like, I just couldn't do it because it was a little bit slow, and they didn't want to pay that. And it goes to weight, and I know that that may sound funny, but the weight issue is a thing for me. Like the bench, even like a four person bench, it was the weight capacity, four hundred pounds. Recycled bench is eleven hundred pounds capacity. So that's why I just, like, if, if you guys don't want to do the recycling bench, I can understand. I can let those three people know, and then just leave it at that. I just don't, it was already on the presentation, and I just.
I, I don't know if council needs to make a decision tonight, I think it's just good to encourage continued discussion on the topic. Between the planner and downtown law people.
Agreed, I think that I, if I'm speaking, I turn council telling me that, I think we'd like to see unified you know, recommendation on this. Um, I do, I am concerned about the ones that don't have a back. But, you know, I, I, Greg knows, as I've asked him about park benches, the one, or benches, the one on Main Street that we took out some time ago, and I've had people coming to me saying, you know, put that back. And they're elderly people, and I think that they would want to sit down and be able to sit back. But again, just food for thought in your discussions, I think the back might be important.
Yeah, we, the back bench was included in conversation, actually Jared, uh, the, the Public Works foreman, he imported the backless ones, but the back one was, we're tossing so many benches around. I think we don't, we haven't decided on one yet, but I, yeah, I think we're over the line on.
We don't actually need to take action, we're just giving you a heads up, but we'd like you to continue the discussion to come up with unified recommendation on, on where we should go, because this is something long term. Okay, everyone?
Yeah, I like the recycled plastic idea too. Not just because of the weight restrictions, what are you trying to say, Kira? I, I had a question, and you answered some of that, about the four point six foot or eight foot. And if the six and eight foot ended divider in the middle, or an armrest, and that reduces, uh, everybody taking a nap there, because they have that speed bump in the middle, it's not just, they could just stretch like that.
So the, the one, and Abby and I did find that one, like it did have that, yeah, yeah. So like that added piece. Yeah, that can have those sections put in. And it's, it might be, like, the one it, it's, it's still a reasonably priced.
I don't think you need four foot to do it with that, but I think the six or eight, you might want to consider it. The other was, I saw a photo where a bench was shown with the corridor open completely, and it wasn't pointing to the bench, it stuck out in the sidewalk next to the curb side. I, I saw that photo somewhere, and I can't.
Saw the back of the one, the last page, I think, it's on the back of the last page.
I can't find it, so I'd sort of like to be in back against the buildings too. Just so it doesn't restrict the traffic flow and handicap accessibility and any of those type of restrictions that we have with requirements. And, and, and the options, and I don't want to tell you where to put them, but the first picture right away is by the steps at the Alps, there is one there, just the left of the steps, facing the building, there is a bench, I thought. So if you wanted to spread it out further. Yeah, so you might want to reassess where you're gonna put the benches, and then get buy-in from those merchants too. Because they're gonna get people sitting there, and hopefully, we have a garbage can by each one.
Ultimately, you know, I think what we all are looking for is input from people where they would like to see them, but yes, the city engineer who will ultimately decide their exact location. Um, it'll have to be something that the engineer signs off on, so that we can ensure them.
I'd rather just have our public boards do it, not pay the engineer to tell us where to put our benches.
Then they won't be insurable.
Are you kidding me?
Come on, you work for Pendot, you should use that.
We didn't have an engineer for everything we did.
That's for sure.
I'm not disagreeing, Kira, Kira, can I ask a question?
Sure.
In the, in the cities that did the recycle programs, were they required to do a certain number of tonnage to re, of recycle before the bench prices were there?
So, the one had done it for six months, you had to collect a certain amount of the Hefty program?
Yeah, I'm concerned with our city doing that, because I just don't think that you're gonna see them.
To make it countywide.
What's that?
I think you could make it countywide, I think.
And still benefit the city. Uh, okay, well.
It's the only city and the county.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, we could partner with Landtown, with Land Bell.
Yeah.
As well.
Alright.
Well, thank you for all the work.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Just before we move on. As the one member of council who can't make it from one end of Main Street to the other without sitting down, I'd be disappointed if there's no back bench.
What I was saying.
And I don't think we want to place them anywhere close to traffic, right? Because we don't want to sit and read the deal of these. And is there anything that the benches telling the city engineer that we wanted to tell us before that?
No, that's what I said. People would need to make a list of where they would suggest that they would go, the engineer, but then look at that and make sure it's appropriate there for ADA compliance or ID applications.
Are you good now? Alright, well, again, thank you for all the work. Ever since that office so far, and looking forward to. Four B, point twenty-three, Great Arm Race Series.
For Talib, and I'm coming to you on a yearly basis, thanking you for the past support for the race this year is a little different, because we're impeded by the construction that's going on, like Perrinville Road, which is gonna prohibit us from being able to to orchestrate traffic across the J Street bridges, as we usually do on the Friday evening race. So this is the end of June twenty, well, it would typically have been the twenty-third and twenty-fourth. But we can't do the Friday evening race this year, this, and that, that one that's going across the bridge with the light restriction, which we understand, so, um, so we actually are not bringing our cyclists, we're really located in the share. So we'll, we'll reroute them one fifty to Mill Hill Road, and then to our loop So, um, so we need the levy again for our, our run portion, and so that's, that's the proposal we're bringing, before you ask me.
What's wish of council?
I move the proposal.
Motion and a second.
And I'm disappointed about the Friday night thing, that's so much fun for novices like myself.
It is, it's always been a great race, and the atmosphere is fun and laid back, and we will have it again.
Great.
Um, in twenty-four, for sure.
Any other comments?
Have you approached the, uh, levy authority for their permission to use the levy yet? Because that goes beyond us, it goes to them. Cause that goes beyond us. It goes to them too, I think, or at least the city and some other. Not for use request?
It would be if he wanted to.
I just want to make sure.
Stall something.
Got approval.
All for vote.
Councilmember Byerly.
Yes.
Councilmember Conflin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yeah.
Mayor Long.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your patience tonight.
Yeah, so remember it's made to the.
Push your green button.
Yeah, the green button.
On the wall. Okay, uh, for that, request for waiver of the noise ordinance on New Year's Eve point twenty-three.
Yeah.
Um, the Clinton County United Way um in partnership with Downtown Lock Haven and the Sons of Italy are requesting. A waiver of chapter two eighty-seven subsection two eighty-seven dash three A. Um, until two AM for their New Year's Eve party being held at the Sons of Italy. Hosted by United Way and Downtown Lock Haven.
So I'm not sure why it's until two AM because the music is done at twelve.
Yeah, well, I have it too. Well, you can be loud and you can't play music.
Okay.
One request says one o'clock and the other one says two. So my question was. Which one? And I think the compromise is given from eleven to one's planning. And it's time to turn the band off for the, it's a split between all the residents that live over there on Mulder Street two.
I didn't know, I don't know.
Yeah, this one says one oh one hundred.
I'm not sure. I did not see what then turned in, but the music is done at twelve thirty. So that's why I wasn't understanding why it went until two. But the music, the band is done at twelve thirty. I can, I know that for a fact.
And that's a little, a little extra half an hour for them to, you know, get that last call, last song. And they can still party, they just can't play outside.
But it's not. Speaking as a member of Ben, noise ordinance doesn't, isn't specific to music, it's about noise. So, you know, um, I just want to clarify that. I'm not disagreeing with you about the other state, but, you know. It's still about noise, not about specifically music.
Well, sometimes the staff at at the at the Suns could be noisy when they put things away.
I move the request to to uh end at one o'clock.
Motion for a second, any further discussion? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Byerly.
Yeah.
Councilmember Conflin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yeah.
Mayor Long.
Yes.
We hope to see it on there. I was gonna say, I'm gonna, then I'm gonna be loud starting at one.
Really?
Oh, you'll still be, I'm making.
No, I might be.
Oh, I'm just gonna say you have to ask for the noise ordinance to be. I haven't seen midnight in the last fifteen years.
Okay, for G. Nonprofit request for funding.
This is the budget season and very patiently. Uh, group of organizations and their representatives, I could say. Um, have been waiting to do their annual request to council for um. Being listed as line items for donations of city taxes to their organization. And first up this evening is the executive director of the Ross Library, Ken Gears.
Um, this year we're requesting thirty-five thousand dollars. Um, this will allow us to provide staff at state required levels. Um, to continue providing service to the public. Um, what it comes down to is nothing happens at the library without our staff and without appropriate levels of staffing. And so all the programs, all the help we provide people, um, it relies entirely on our staff. And we've had children who have faced the summer reading program, have improved their skills going into the school year, which. Uh, proves that we've prevented summer slide if they're actually improving when they go back to school. Um, we've had children who have been so invested in STEM program that they've uh continued their experiments at home. Um, so they're getting a jump start on the STEM field, um, whenever they're getting into high school and uh later into college. Um, we've had folks contact the library for information that they've needed for personal and professional reasons. That um we were able to provide quickly because we have uh trained professional staff, uh including a baby who needed to know what has been, what. Uh, school her husband attended for high school for his uh week. And we were able to provide that while she was on the phone with us because we have trained historian on staff. And um, we were able to fulfill a patient uh cancer patient's request to do an investigation at the library. And both she and her mom were very pleased that we were able to do that. And that's just some of the things that we're able to do because we have the staff that we have and they're. All great, they're all professionals, they're not getting paid dearly enough. Um, and. We would like to provide them with uh adequate compensation and ad- adequate levels of people. Uh, so they're not rushing around and uh often we can meet state standards.
Any questions?
Council has its handy dandy annual worksheet. And uh, there is a space that shows the funding over the course of time from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-two. And then in the twenty twenty-three request line to the Ross Library. Uh, you can write thirty-five thousand and then the decision on those will actually be maybe at the maybe one hundred twenty-first of November. Next. We have Bonnie from the Historical Society. Bonnie's, of course, president. And uh, you guys just did a very nice installation in the front.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. It was a long time coming of this stuff. It took us a year to get it done. Uh, but it is a wonderful testament to volunteers who have volunteered with the. Historical society for many years. So thank you very much for that nice comment. I appreciate that. It's always good to hear good things. But anyway, I'm here tonight to uh ask uh your organization to uh help us with the amount of two thousand dollars. Uh, for the Clinton County Historical Society. I have to say probably outside of dedicating the patio this year. And the things I've related into it, the artifact is given to us over the past year, et cetera. Uh, I would, I would have to say the caboose has been. A godsend. And it has brought us a lot of interest uh in the state of Pennsylvania. Let me uh. Uh, tell you that I have done interviews with newspapers in three different major cities. In the state of Pennsylvania that wanted to know about our caboose. I've had the uh television booth in Mount Tunica. And these are the caboose. I've had a crew come from. Wilkes-Barre, Scranton, and giving moves. I had a crew come out of New York City. For a television station that is only dedicated to railroaders and and did a feature uh on our caboose. And um, it is very, very difficult for historical societies to come up with. A funding stream that kind of fits what our mission is, which is to. Collect, preserve and share the history of the area. And certainly the caboose has 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 done that. It fits that very, very well. Uh, we have a book uh that we keep in the caboose that we ask our guests to sign in. To, so we know where they're coming from. They've come from all over the United States. We've had visitors from Germany. Spain, England, and it's just incredible. Uh, to to see them come into our community. And to hear the nice comments they have about our community and the state that they have been with us. In uh, on the same property, uh, a number of years ago. Uh, vocational technical students built a replica water tower. That we are currently using as a kiosk for information about the community, about the county. Uh, so anybody coming who's been hiking or by the Bald Eagle Valley Trail. The kiosk is right there. They can, when they can grab a map, they can get a brochure on events. They can, you know, just get information on what restaurants we have in town that they might want to uh to visit. So it's, it's been a wonderful year. Uh, and the caboose has brought us a lot of interest and a lot of visitors to the community. Our big fundraiser every year is Wine in the Wilds and we have started out. Uh, in Castaneda, we had to move to the uh. Fairgrounds facilities because we kind of got grouped out today. Uh, and we had to take a year off because of the pandemic, which had really impacted our budget. But we were able to keep the caboose open because it only housed two people. And people felt very safe coming to that kind of a situation rather than a hotel or hotel in their travels. So the revenue that we have got from the caboose that year. While we were basically shut down and not allowed to do a lot of things. To include that fundraiser Wine in the Wilds certainly was a big benefit for us. So we continue to do uh what we can in the community to preserve our history. Uh, every week we're getting telephone calls. People come by and say. I've got this, you might be interested in adding it to the collection. Our collections committee. Is extremely busy, not only dealing with new things coming into the collection. But also they're serving what we already have in the collection. Assessing the need to to keep it and digitizing all that information. It's a big project. Your two thousand dollars is going to be put very good use with the historical society. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about the organization and what we do. And you've got a great smile on your face. Good for you.
Anyone have any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's up. Your heart is come on behalf of Downtown Lock Haven's board to speak to council.
I I also brought a hand out and this might be a little bit awkward because the person I'm talking about is here in the room. I think they're all really. Very familiar um what our downtown manager um has been up to lately. Um, and so this packet, I brought you our ten uh. October third budget first actual. I brought you our October thirtieth balance, just to give you a glimpse in downtown Lock Haven financial status. Um, I also brought you a manager's salary survey that Kira was able to acquire at one of her Pennsylvania. Main Street downtown conferences. Um, the reason that Downtown Lock Haven is uh requesting an increase um in the city of Lock Haven's investment. Is because we as a board of Downtown Lock Haven feel like. The time is now to capitalize on the energy surrounding our community, our city and our business district. Um, currently Kira uh is paid thirty-two thousand dollars a year. Uh, for the work that she does. There there are no benefits and no retirement affiliated uh with this position. Kira has a lot of energy. She works full time. I know I get her phone calls at eight thirty-nine o'clock at night with her ideas and things that she's working on. Um, I've heard from the Texas that she got some time in the office at six o'clock in the morning. Um, she is extremely dedicated to this position and it's for that reason. Uh, that we're requesting all of our government partners uh to increase their funding to Downtown Lock Haven this year uh for sustainability and retention. Um, and to be perfectly honest with you guys, and I don't want to um. Make Kira uncomfortable, but a lot of times she invests her own money into some of the projects and things that she does, the events that she does for Downtown Lock Haven. Um, she's increased uh our business membership and our memberships as a whole. Um, if you're not aware of the social media presence of Downtown Lock Haven. And the accolades that she's getting from all over the state, the region from her TikToks and her Facebook and the different things uh that she does. Um, please be sure to follow Downtown Lock Haven on the platforms. Um, just promoting our community, the downtown events and the businesses here in the city. Her collaboration with other organizations and then of course all of the new events that she's brought to the community. And those are in addition to the old events like Best of Clinton County, beautifying Lock Haven, keeping um the city uh. Ready for the holidays and um aesthetically pleasing to people that come to our community to shop and visit. Um, and in in conjunction with that, the things that we've already talked about with the lights and the benches as a five oh one C three nonprofit organization. That was created back uh when I worked for Leon Orhan again, back in the late nineties, when it was the revitalization committee. Um, that has eventually become Downtown Lock Haven and the growth that we've seen with that. Our sustainability is really contingent on our governing bodies in not only the city, but the county as well, supporting the organization. And if we're going to get to the main street um debt allocation um. In being a main street program, which is a an identified goal, um, you know, we need that continued support. And so I know that it's crunch time for everybody. I know firsthand that budgets are really tough this year. I know that uh there are a lot of needs, a lot of wants. And so I just respectfully on behalf of our board of Downtown Lock Haven, ask you to consider. Not only continuing your support for Downtown Lock Haven, if that possibly increasing.
Anyone have any questions for panel? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ladies, before Donald initiatives, the house, the gentleman's turn. Thank you. Your log is here from the SPCA.
Yes, I have a ton of facts to follow and I don't have any. Definitely information to give you tonight, but I do, we do appreciate all of past funding. And uh hopefully we can get your support for twenty twenty-three and if there is any information that. Anybody would like to request, I would do my best to try to get it to you. It's kind of put on the spot, so that's. It's best, I can tell you. So thank you very much.
The animal control officer for the city is the SPCA's. Control officer and the SPCA has always been very helpful with uh. I call it catch and release, although I don't know if that's really what you call it, but.
Trap, neuter and release.
Yeah.
Technical term.
So um.
If you do anything about ground, I'll.
That's a different organization.
Take care of and uh release back so that they don't turn into sixty cat.
Anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that cleared it out.
Yeah, maybe if you told Jenny for half and half again, we haven't gotten a quarter. Everything else is clear. And so we get anything from the partnership?
No, you don't ever. They're just on there. Yeah. That's where their membership fee comes out of. But we don't usually get a present.
Okay, so we're done with all the things of the public comments requests. You don't have anything else?
I do not, here on.
All right, unfinished business five A, consideration ordinance number twenty-two dash twelve.
The ordinance before council this evening is the one we requested earlier in the year with council agreed to set a rate. For the new stormwater management fee at a hundred dollars per year for property. That fee will be charged to all properties within the city that are not. This fee will begin to provide the pumping needed to address the city's aging stormwater infrastructure. The pipes beneath the ground can carry a little rainwater from streets and gutters to the river. Like all infrastructure installed more than forty years ago, the system of catch basins and pipes and the curves and gutters. That line our streets need to be replaced. The ordinance does call for an accompanying manual through which property owners may seek a reduction of their fee by taking steps to reduce the amount of runoff from their property. Including rain barrels or in the case of commercial properties. Um, the installation of rain gardens. That manual is included in. That manual is included in council's packet and will be available for public review on the city's website as well as the ordinance. There is also a provision under which landlords of buildings of three or fewer rental units may elect to have to be added to the tenant's city. Water and sewer bills provided those tenants already have water and sewer in their name. All property owners will be billed through the city utility billing system. Um, quarterly, just as they currently are for water and or sewer. If council adopts this ordinance this evening on first reading. Second reading will take place on November twenty first during the seven o'clock regular meeting of city council. If implemented, it would become effective January first, but the first bill would not go out until the second quarter. Of twenty twenty three, so that there's time for the utility billing office to get everything set up.
We discussed this before. Talked about the cost of all the benefits.
Remember this, you thought that you.
No, say it again.
Need getting the credits for putting in, you know, like rain barrels and stuff like that. I thought first we could talk about.
Yeah, I think there is a.
There's something in.
Two or three ways to get a credit up to ten percent, I think.
Right, but I thought we said we didn't want to do that right away. Trying to get revenue to do repairs to system.
If your bill's five hundred bucks, ten percent's fifty dollars.
I'm just.
Yeah.
Trying to remember the conversation.
Yeah, I don't.
Whatever council wants to do, I'll buy.
Yeah, I don't. I'm not sure that I've been encouraged in having this credit actually. And I don't think it'll weigh enough to that amount of money to. Well, to offset your costs that much that. Let it be worth it because we're not dealing with the water.
Richard, do you have something?
Yeah, um. On a single family residence, if you if you purchase two rain barrels. You're twenty percent credit and get your money back in the end. I don't think there will be much demand uh doing that. And that's based on. Constant economics. If you add in. Coming back with money, it takes even longer. And if that's true for a single. Family residence, I I can't conceive that there are very many commercial properties specifically. That could make, even if they're. Even if it's a just the hazards in it, I don't think there are many properties that would. Could justify the capital expenditure of putting in. Uh, peak volume controls or. Uh, people controls. And so I I think this credit thing was good on paper, but in practical form, you nobody could or would want to benefit.
And please be clear, I wasn't trying to say we shouldn't do it. I just thought when we had the discussion before it was.
It just gives them an option. That if they want to do it fine, and if they don't. Because it gives them some flexibility to. To make available those credit. I wouldn't, I wouldn't worry about taking it out.
It is.
Yeah. The ordinance is probably stronger with some alternatives in it than having none and being very rigid. Because there is some flexibility there, and I think that's important to show some of that.
Yeah, I just.
And I agree. I don't think you'll see a lot of use of it, even with people that do decide to do a lot of. So, you know, the rain barrels. Can I ask a question though, just because, and I know, I know that city staff's very busy. Is it if the interim uh over the next number of months, can we get uh? I I guess we don't need to do that. I'm just thinking of a a common vendor. For rain barrels. I got to tell you, in Carlisle, I was shocked at the amount of people on the main street. Of Carla, one of the main streets of Carlisle, where the restaurants were, the number of buildings that had. Very decorative rain barrels on the street. Right at their building, where, you know, the, think about it kind of like in Gennysburg, where you walk down the street. All the people live here, then there's a store and then somebody lives here. And they all have these very decorative rain barrels. So they found a vendor is all I'm saying. If we can find some vendors, that would be helpful, but we could do that on our own, I guess. But I just thought if you have common vendors for areas like that, it would look nice. If people decide to do that.
The conservation district.
Yeah, I think they're free. I think they're up to like a bond.
Yeah, 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 I would.
Nobody said you can't pay.
I'm certainly interested.
I would need six. You know, I I get six downspouts.
I just.
Then I'd be spending more on downspout or. On barrels that I would be saving.
I have.
I think it's what thirty three years.
Yeah, or that that one that's in the ground. I I would just do the rock garden one. I mean, that's kind of what I already have.
I connected all the ones with the back of the house, the back side of the house. I had three, four lives there. And I connected the that I could just put a rain barrel at the end of that.
But if.
But you're right.
But if we do a a rock one, I think we're going to have to have like. A standard by which we measure. What we'll accept. And I mean, if it's got certain white rocks out there. And that's going to be simple, but in order to have to have some stuff underneath it, so.
It it does. It has to be reviewed by the engineer. And if you're doing something like that, you'd have.
That engineer.
Yeah, so we're gonna have to like send that out to the like every home. This is what's acceptable and. Or I start.
It seems to me it would be better if. If you're gonna. Do credits. The the credit should be based on. If you take the ratio of the drain roof area to the token side of the R U. And then you pro rates. The user fee in that ratio. Well, if somebody who has a twelve hundred square foot roof. Is draining twice as much as somebody who has a six hundred square foot roof. But they get the same. They get the same credit.
Well, they get the same deal. If they don't have it, so you know, so I guess. I guess.
The standardized fee of a hundred dollars takes care of that six hundred footer, twelve hundred footer largely. It's an average of everybody's.
But the back of my house isn't close to the storm. Greens as the front of my house. So the back house is getting, you understand, do I need barrels in the back of my house or do I only have to have in the front? If my front of my property is. Forty feet from the the roadway, do I have to have a barrel? Or is it only ten feet?
I believe, if I recall. In. The sizable document, then at least fifty percent of the surface area of your roof has to go into rain barrels for. Um, you to receive any credit. So it really depends on the amount of credit that you want.
Then you just open the bottom spigot on the ground. Yeah, basically, that's all it is.
So what about those properties where the downspout already drain onto urbanous services? Asking for a friend.
They make, yeah, they make a specific. Uh, downspout and rain barrel adapter for that. That it will go to the rain barrel until the rain barrels fall and then it will still dump out into that same location. My brother-in-law has those on his house. That's the only reason I know that this adapter comes out goes to hell. For what it's worth, I think we're probably overthinking this too much because I don't think there will be that many people taking advantage of it. Uh. It's a lot of work for ten dollars a year. Or twenty dollars a year. I don't know that it's based on the number of rain barrels, so.
As long as it doesn't interfere with parking on South Fairview Street, I think it'll all be all right.
Yeah, don't cheer it, but we're still alive. I don't disagree.
I mean, I I am. I'm willing to own that seat.
Yes. You talk.
I am.
Well, um. Wish count.
Well, I just had a couple of questions on this going ahead. Or do you want to put the motion up?
Yeah, I'd like to get the motion on the floor and then we can.
I'm I'll I'll move uh the uh ordinance twenty twenty two twelve first reading.
Do I have a second? Have a second. Okay, now, Richard, you had some questions.
Okay, well, we won't have. Management spelled correctly in the. Um. We have a definition of underdeveloped parcel, but there is no reference to an undeveloped parcel anywhere in the ordinance, so that. Um. I'm confused. Are we collecting this? With and as part of the sewer bill or is it going to be built separately?
It will come on the same votes card. So if you have water and sewer, you, as an example, have just sewer through the city. So let's say sewer, stormwater.
Right.
If you have all three, they'll each show up as separate utilities.
Right.
Part I like about it is it's non discriminatory. It's. Everybody, no matter what their status is, everybody shares. And benefits and the cost.
Right, well, in non taxable, everybody city, the. You know, non taxable ones pay this, so it's to break the burden out more evenly.
Um. When do we get the section four B? You round to the next highest tenth of an E R U, not the ten with one percent of an E R U. A lot of this. I'm I'm trying to simplify things, so we have a few as number of people actually being built and stuff. Why don't we just build the owner? Is it typical in three units that the tenants pay the wardens or bill?
So.
Is there a lead? So I would let his tenant.
I would. My tenants pay their own water and sewer.
But she's responsible.
I'm ultimately responsible for it. The tenants pay the bill. They get the bill in their names to their house.
So and their incentive is less water, less sewer, less bill they have back. If they, if you just give them up, the tenant or the landlord pays it. It's sort of uncontrollable. Yeah. So it's your, their incentive to keep the. Water down.
So now we have a confusion because some places the owner is being built more and on places the tenant is being built.
Only in the request of. Property owner, if it's a three unit or fewer. Then the city could accommodate that if it is also already accommodating the water sewer bill. At that part. But if you have four or more, it will not be added to the utility bill or go directly to the. The property.
Um. On page two of the manual. Fourth paragraph of the introduction, it says all property owners are eligible to apply for credits when system. Think that. Syntax is falling down somewhere.
If you have boards, examples like that, I can send them back to the engineer. If you like. See more.
Yeah, why don't we, Richard, if you don't mind, why why this is first reading, so it's going to have to go through. Get second reading. If you have a long list of questions, perhaps you provide to staff and then we can address.
That's that's it.
You sure? I mean, you you're entitled to ask questions. I'm just. You know, we can, this is a two-step process, so it's going to be two weeks till we, you know, pass a second reading, you can get. Questions answered, we can address.
Yeah, well, I I don't know any more deep. Problems with the language thing, I. Give my job as I take the credits amount because I think it's a little more favor for something that we're not actually paying. But it is what it is.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Call for the vote.
Councilor Riley.
Yes.
Councilor Conklin.
Yes.
Councilor Missouri, yes. Councilor Stevenson.
Yes.
Councilor Brinker.
Yes.
Councilor Morris.
Yes.
Fairlaw.
Yes. Five B, any additional discussion uh? Ordinance number twenty twenty two dash eleven.
Council was provided an updated copy of the ordinance. And that has also been placed on the city's website. Also, two comments came in. Both from outer state individuals. Uh, one. Appears to uh be in favor, one opposed to. The adoption of the ordinance, but those have been given to council for their informational consideration.
I had um someone reach out to me. Uh. They own property for water stream. Adjacent property to make a lot of years of complaints, da, 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 da. Basically, they said they were big property registry. Feel feel the escalation defined is too slow and makes me more impact on the problem. Um. You can understand people fall on hard times and delays such a prolonged probation can. Keep the property vacant for a certain period of time, but. Their experience was just property only willingly vacates their property. It'll take significant negative financial impact that force them to take action on the problem. They believe that two years is a reasonable time to sort out issues on property. Uh, but we suggest that. The five thousand dollar fee kick in. Year three and then continue to escalate here. That was a suggestion from a property owner here. Going you all in.
Yeah, and I I I struggle with that. Now, it's better to. Essentially find somebody five thousand dollars. You know, provide money to the city, which can then make us apply. Problem. Or is it better for him to just spend five thousand dollars on his property?
But if they aren't doing it. You know, it it is the whole point of the ordinance, I believe, is that we. We spend more staff time trying to look after properties that aren't being taken care of because they were. Left empty. And trying to encourage them to fix it up or sell it or get it occupied. It is, I think, the intent is not what we're looking for in this. And I I'm not saying that that this person is right, but I see their point.
Yeah, that's.
Is it, you know? If it's cheap enough, they'll just keep letting it go. Perpetuity, so that, you know.
Do we have any kind of gut feeling or assuming we have under the second compliance with registration? Um, on the first list, do we have any rough idea how many properties?
Uh, not today. I don't. I can look at the census and get a statistical. Analysis of estimation of vacant properties in the city, but that really is just an estimate.
I suppose if we knew, we wouldn't need the registry.
You know, the ones that are a problem. I mean, you know, the ones that are vacant that are an issue. So that, you know, that's the.
Yeah, um, but. That comes to a time for us.
But that's part of who you talk to in the city. I'll.
There's probably not as many.
Forward them your your email so you can.
One other thing that just goes to me since we talked about it. The um. The rental inspection ordinance contains a requirement that every deed. Balsor and residential property in the city contain a reference to that order. And this is a similar kind of thing. I'm just. Throw out this question whether this ordinance should contain something similar.
Uh, I can certainly run that past the solicitor.
I think the idea that the ordinance fought for too was that. The more you tell people the ordinance is there, the more likely you are to comply with.
Any other discussion on that? Any other discussion on that? Okay, so that'll be on the. Jennifer second reading on November fourteenth, correct, correct?
Correct.
Thank, thank you. Five C, consideration the first modification agreement for the twenty twenty-two Penn Vest law.
Uh, this is. I mean, obviously, everything council does is very important, so this is not a formality. Uh, but this was already signed. At the insistence of Penn Vest. But, uh, for council's adoption, what happened is that the city's. Closing documents. For the loan. Uh, Penn Vest inadvertently put closing documents for. Gailton, Pennsylvania into the city's packet. And so we have to do a modification to remove Gailtons and. Instead, insert the cities. So.
So what we're looking for is you affirm. My signature, your signature on the documentation. Do I have a motion? Thank you.
Oh, sure, I'll.
Thank you. I don't think we need to really get into a deep discussion on that. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Riley.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
I've been saying stupid is as stupid does. Yes.
Councilmember Missouri, yes. Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes.
I do want to clarify, the city did not submit Gailton's paperwork.
That's right, that's what I'm saying.
We just tried to clarify what you're talking about.
Right.
It's getting later and later, this snarky and, you know. Gets worse.
That'll be the last one we get.
Okay, five D, we're running on record time tonight. To reject all bids for the Ross Library Route project.
So this is a twenty twenty-one C D P G project, we're collaborating with the last red. Austin, I heard, and Tammy is here today, we opened bids on November first. Uh, to be added, one bid was received from that wire. Roofing, I will see, um, the bid was above. Right, and came in at one hundred eighty-five thousand, three hundred seventy-eight dollars. This was significantly, significantly above the budget for, um. The library in combination with C D V G funds. Um, I attended a Ross Library meeting last week, um, and the board voted to. Uh, decided to redo the project in the winter and all setting up our prices, um, if not all of the other alternate.
Let's wish council.
Yeah.
So we reject the bid.
Have motion?
Yeah.
And a second. We need further discussion?
Yeah, the original bid estimate. It's forty-five thousand dollars a year ago. So. Far exceeding. Yes.
Any further? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Riley.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yeah.
Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yeah.
Mayor Long.
Yes. Five E. Their approval for bids for the following twenty twenty-three year.
Thank you, just to show up.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you guys for your dedication.
You can make, uh, this as one motion if it pleases council.
Right.
Um. City Hall Cleaning Services would be to reject all bids, garbage collection awarded to J J Pewders and sludge hauling awarded to J J Pewders.
Question, question. Has anything changed as far as that stuff that's current? Person or company for a car call?
It is.
Are, are they aware of things that we're happy with and things we're not happy with?
They are.
Do I have a motion?
Go, please. Second.
Further discussion?
It's the plans for. Bringing. Is gonna reopen bids or? Uh, no, we'll. We'll put that out as. An employment opportunity, um, currently. There are. So city hall is normally cleaned by one individual. When you take that out to the hourly rate for what they're asking the city to pay that one individual. That's more than eighteen other city employees, including part-time fire drivers. And it is more than any member of the asked me. Workers of the city makes, so it's a significant amount of money. And so. It is a position that the city does have the ability to hire, and so.
And have in the past.
And have in the past.
Steve, I question their rates. Uh, two cubic yard dumpster every week's four hundred, four hundred and eighty. A one and a half cubic yard dumpster is four hundred and fifty-six. And a three cubic yard dumpster is only three hundred dollars. So that I can't, I couldn't figure any rhyme or reason to how they charge us for the size of the dumpster. And, and they're all emptied every week. So.
Well, that's the bid, but we don't actually keep all the dumpsters in every place all year long.
Okay.
We're only built for what we actually. Use or consume, I should say. But it, I mean, it's up to them how they want to arrange the boss.
Yeah.
Um. And it may have to do with how many dumpsters of each type they. They themselves own. If they have surplus of one sitting on the ground, it would be more advantageous to charge us less. To get those off their property and into our parks.
I just couldn't figure out the rate structure, but I was going by the size of the dumpster. That's, that was.
Any questions? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Riley.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri, yes. Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yeah.
Mayor Long.
Yes. Five F, notice of the award to C D V G.
Wow.
This is the award for the, um. C D V G competitive grant discretionary grant that was submitted. Um, August. For seven hundred thirty-five thousand dollars for the Lock even State Park. Um, this was the estimate provided. Um, by the city engineer, but based upon the design. Process, the feeding, digging process we did earlier this year. Um, so everyone I called and emailed some skaters who were directly involved and they're very excited. The contract for this is rather quick, so we'll be looking at construction at no spring ends.
Good news. Yeah, very exact. Do we have any other unfinished business, Rick?
Uh, no, you're on.
Okay, new business, six A, consideration request, Clinton County Housing Polo, we always did that. It's already done. Six B, consideration ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash thirteen.
Thank you. Uh, this is the annual ordinance. For council's consideration to set the wages for non-union employees. For the year twenty twenty-three, rates of pay are included on the second page.
Do I have a motion?
So good.
Second.
Motion of the floor and a second, any further discussion? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Riley.
Yeah.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri, yes. Councilmember Stevenson.
Yeah.
Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes. Anything else under new business?
Uh, I have nothing here on it.
Okay. Twenty twenty-three budget. Presentation of twenty twenty-three, propose the city budget.
Everyone who was supposed to speak this week is being brought to the next council meeting, um. I will go over something quickly, though. Council has been provided the budget book, it will be available tomorrow. Uh-huh. But, sorry.
That's what, I'm gonna come again.
The. Um. Budget book will be available on the website, hopefully tomorrow. Um, it always takes a little bit of work by Casey to get it to. Reduce in size, um, so that it can go onto the website, also be available here. Um, for anyone to stop by and view a physical copy of it. Um, I would not suggest printing it out at home if you're a typical resident, as it is eighty pages long. Um, but it does include the operations of the entire city. For major and minor funds. And in all. If you turn with me to. Page eight. You can see the, for the total major funds and the capital projects associated with those, the city will bring in some twenty-nine million dollars. Uh, in twenty twenty-three and expend just shy of twenty-eight million dollars of that. Obviously, the city is going through an enormous number of capital projects right now. Um, the dams being the largest of those, but also. The grant-supported. Um, Overman Park. And Tiger Park projects as well. The minor funds for the city, they'll bring in about five hundred thousand and expend about half of that. Uh. There are pages in the budget book. That. Will give you more information about the effects of real estate taxes on the median household. This year, the median household is three twenty-three East Church Street, it actually has two. Um. Units on that property. Last year, I believe it was on. Fairview Street. But it shifted a little because Geisinger completed their facility, so everybody switches a little bit. Probably the most important thing to direct council's attention to is actually on page fifty-six. And. Fifty-six is where we go into discussion, I guess, just to start. On the necessity to increase the sewer rates. Um, obviously, the city, like every. Entity, whether you're a personal household, a commercial enterprise, or a public utility, inflation is affecting everyone, and specifically. The city, um, creates more than. Eight hundred million gallons of sewer a year for ourselves and the partner municipalities who contribute. Currently, the sewer rates are tiered, um, so that. As you use more sewer, you actually get a savings. But that actually only benefits about three percent of the total customer base. Ninety-seven percent of our customers, which are basically in the people from tier one to four. Cover the cost for the other three percent, which are the largest consumers. So, um. What I am proposing is to shift that matrix. And instead, um. Let those who use less. Pay less. And have those who use more pay more. The way that we build sewer is based on consumption of water. So if you have, let's say, three hundred units in a building. Like a rental property with three hundred units. Um. You actually pay less for the water for those three hundred units than somebody who lives by themselves in their own home. So you're gonna pay more in sewer costs if you live by yourself. The rate per gallon than if you live in that large building. As we look forward to finally getting to the point in a couple of years where we can tackle Keller. Um. That reservoir will be emptied and taken offline, it will have two supplemental wells and also a small amount of water coming down. Mackerel Hat Creek that we can capture, but prior to that, it would be in everyone's best interest to start major conservation efforts. You as a typical homeowner, he is a typical homeowner. Um. Most of us have made the switch to low-flow shower heads and. Low-flow toilets and kind of done everything we can to reduce our water consumption. The largest users, that, that may not necessarily be true for. And so giving them an incentive to use less water, which is the way their consumption is going to be built for sewer. Would be a great cost savings for them. As well, but again, it's three percent of the customer, so on average, if you're looking at. Um, our. Small residential households, medium residential households. Um, typical resident units, dry cleaners, auto dealerships, and most importantly, locally owned restaurants. Not chain restaurants, but locally owned restaurants. They would look at an increase, um, per quarter. On their bill on average between fifty-three cents and six dollars. So that would be the effect on the typical. Average household. The effect, obviously, would be more on larger consumers. But, um, that is. What we will be discussing more in depth at the next council meeting, after you have a chance to review. Um, the proposal on. Um. The rate increase, what does not change is that there is a necessity for the rates of sewer to increase. To help cover the cost, uh. Of sewer operations.
How does Northwood Southern get to be in tier six, seventy-seven?
Depends on the time their bill comes. Some quarters they use more than others.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Okay.
Actually, in example, my household falls, depending on the time of year, um. Into one tier and into another tier. So when it's summertime, I obviously consume more water because I. Showering more because it's hot, but also water and plants and things.
One of those rain barrels.
If I had a rain barrel.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, my home has a rain garden, so I can't access the water.
Well, thank you, Mr. Wilson, for all the extra, and extra work, we know how hard it is to put budgets together and. You are great, nice and well.
I'm what?
Great.
Great. I, since you have this, and I've worked on this since June.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, I will tell you that. When you look at the goals and objectives, everyone provided those goals and objectives. Um. For their departments, mostly the foreman and department heads. But you have to be careful when you do something good. Right? When you're really good at something, then you get assigned another task. So Abby and Casey were really good. At lining up how each of their quotas. Combined with Destination Lot Haven's comprehensive plan, so that was something that then. Casey got to work on as a project, was taking everyone's goals and figuring out where they fell in the comprehensive plan. See, don't be too good at something where you end up with extra work, but. It really is helpful, I think, not just from a council perspective, but for the public at large, who hopefully does review this. Book, because it does give a broad overview on where your money goes. Um, right down to, we split the dollar to show you how many pennies of your taxes go to different things. How much money that comes into the city. Um, is. Actually, um, tax revenue compared to other sources. And importantly, if you think your taxes are high. Geisinger pays fifty-two thousand dollars a year, and that's in this book too. So you can see who the top taxpayers are. Um, and there really is helpful information. And speaking of that, I think every resident should turn to page eleven, lucky number eleven. To see what the effect of, um, tax exempt properties in the city is. On the typical household. But obviously, council will review it, we'll be going over different aspects of different departments over the next few weeks. On that topic. In the packet is ordinance number twenty-two fourteen and twenty-two fifteen. Adopting the fiscal year budget and also setting the real estate tax millage, which is proposed to be the same as it currently.
This is just first reading?
Correct, the number in the millards are not intended to change. The numbers in the budget will be refined. Up to the twenty-third.
Do I have a motion?
Well, if you will get us out of there before I agree to that, yes.
I have a second?
Second.
Motion for a second, any further discussion? Call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Riley.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri, yes. Councilmember Stevenson. Councilmember Stevenson.
Yeah.
Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Law.
Yes, that's everything for the budget for this evening?
Yes, your honor.
Okay, FYI's and reports. They're all there. Anyone have anything else to bring before council this evening?
Yeah, real clear. Sorry. I got my tree beautification in my yard today. So we got the leaves cleaned off the front and then next thing when I came home, I said, well, they. I don't think they're still up there with leaves because it just was digging much longer than what you thought. So you go to that side and they're digging the hole. We didn't get a tree. Um, so we got one of the the trees in our yard down our lane on West Main Street. There's. A handful of trees I can see now that's been installed. I had talked to some neighbors prior to this. I think there's a misunderstanding, so just wanted to make sure that you, if you get any phone calls or hearing, you're sending phone calls. Some people think that they can just have their old trees cut down. And not a new one put in, so you don't want to take care of them. So I was looking at this night says, just let everybody the public know, says. If you already have trees in the grass plot between the sidewalk and the curb, you can keep them. Or the city can remove them at your request and plant a new tree. It doesn't say the city will remove them. At free expense, it says that at your request and plant a new tree. There's some people thinking that, oh, we're just going to cut down the trees. And now we're not going to have to worry about them anymore because they're, the city's going to take them down, so. I think there's a misconception.
If they just want to remove all of their responsibility, they remember.
Right.
Place with a new tree.
Correct. Because they are talking like, wow, I don't want to take care of them. I don't want to respond to them. The city's going to remove them. And I didn't have the paper at the hand while I was talking to them, so. I'm gonna have to go talk to a few of our neighbors because it said, and we'll put in the tree and. Uh, remove six trees, so three trees from their property.
The removal is contingent upon putting another one in place.
Correct.
Can you not have the new tree? You don't want the new tree.
Yeah, but they are going to ruin it. That's what you say.
No, but I mean, if you don't want a new tree, I, the person that contacted me doesn't want a tree planted. They just had their sidewalks all redone. And got rid of their tree and now they're getting a new tree. And they. I didn't see the letter, so I didn't have any idea what the topic was, what they were talking about.
So I got this on the twentieth. And.
Trees that are being picked are smaller as well, so they're. Ideally, the tree commission and public works. And Abby and I, when we met to pick the trees, they're picking ones that wouldn't grow. Super large and then have more leaves or fruit falling. Not other things, but. Yeah, and the roots, they're bare rooted. But I would say we don't want a tree like. Because I know trees can operate the sidewalks and if she, if someone just fixed that, then um, definitely your job to. Tony at public works if she has.
But there's.
But they have the letter just.
But there's not like a deadline saying, hey, we do not want one. Then you need to contact us by such and such day, or we're going to start planting trees on November seventh.
When did you start planting trees?
Yeah, I got a tree in my yard. I didn't, I didn't know I was getting it today. We got all these trees going down.
Congratulations.
We got all those trees going down, but it doesn't say. You need to just let us know by such and such a date. That. So I got right now. The tree is there. It's I know the Ross Library voted to cut down all the trees except for one. And I was at the meeting and I'm like, and I didn't have the paper in front of me and I didn't. Fully read it and fail, so I gotta let them know that they can't. Just cut down six trees.
If the Ross is paying to cut them down, pretty.
No, the city is cutting down. That's their interpretation of this. So there's some people in on that street is the interpretation that, well, the city is just going to cut them down because. That's, that's what we're going to do. And it says, well, we'll come down and replace them.
Yeah, they only do that a little levy, right?
Yeah.
Right?
But that's, that's. If we do this in the future, we get another grant, we need to make sure that. You, we include, this is where we're going to plant them. And you have to list a why such and such date or we're going to. Because you might have an owner out there that says, I don't want it now.
Yeah, to clarify, who's the letter from?
The city.
Just city.
Signed by Tony.
Okay, so tell me then who we need to.
Yeah.
Make the.
Yeah, we'll get some clarification.
Margaret, you get that address. Get in touch tomorrow and let them know. Please don't put a tree in that.
This, no question, uh, economic partner time this week Thursday at the Ross. We, we're good for two. And then are you taking reservations for the parking the holiday party?
Just everyone's getting a ticket. If you want to guess your spouse, then.
Buy it yourself.
Fair enough. Anything else? Do I have a motion to adjourn? For adjourn, thank you.